Has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Item three will be moved over to the action items in. In information or discussion items, border security, the city manager.
Yeah, honorable mayor, city council. We've got an update this evening with Chief Martin. I'm looking at the the list of attendees is. I did not hear from Chief Gio, did you? Oh, he's in person. I'm sorry. My gosh, I'm terrible. Sorry, Chief.
It's live on Tuesday night. It's the chief.
That's right.
Oh, no.
Your arm.
Mayor Council, how are you all today?
Pretty good.
I'm reporting on the border security. And one of the things I wanted to let council know about is the police department on a weekly basis meet with the joint operations intelligence center. We call it the joy. There's going to be a lot of acronyms in this, which is what we're so uses. And the agencies involved in the joint in reporting range all the way from Al Paso to the Rio Grande Valley. And we get it. We talk once a week over the telephone and they're giving us trends that they may see apprehensions that have been made in their areas along with ours. The in Alpine, we have a resident agent in charge. Acronym for that is we call him the RAC. Mr. Dominguez is very informative to us, works with us. We work with border patrol really really good. Level and any for an example, the checkpoint on highway 118, whatever they close down the checkpoint, they call our dispatch and let us know. So we know to keep an eye on 118 vehicles from the north. The Alpine police officers are, I just want to let you know, we are actually restricted by law to asking an individual their citizenship. We're not word. So I just wanted to let y'all know that we don't ask them their citizenship. We can identify if they appear to be an illegal, then we contact border patrol to investigate.
So if, but if an officer stops them, they're going to ask for ID and insurance.
Correct.
And if they cannot produce an ID, then I was going to call border patrol.
Some stats I wanted to touch on in the Martha's sector. Okay. And when we met with the rec at the border patrol office, this. Someone have a question? From February the third till February the 10th, there were 655 undocumented aliens apprehended. And just to calculate that out, that's thirty, if that trend continued, I'm sure you've already some have already figured the numbers on this. That is thirty six thousand, six hundred and eighty apprehensions in a year. That averages out to ten, I'm sorry, a hundred per day. Okay.
That's just.
That's my position on it. Just in the AOR, which is just in the Alpine district, okay? Hundred and fifty. Eight hundred and eight, eight thousand, four hundred a year on average, twenty three a day. In that week, Alpine Police Department apprehended five in the city limits. And I did want to just throw out there that one of them was a repeat. And was discovered that he was a convicted sex offender. So those are some of the numbers. We're continuing to work with border patrol and other agencies. APS is another big, we try to work with all agencies, trying to make Alpine safe. Any questions?
So Chief, how do these numbers compare to say last year's?
I spoke with an individual that's in the border patrol. He's in the air part of it. And he told me that they have seen a two hundred percent increase in illegals coming in. That's only ones that.
Hey, Chief, just one other thing real quick. I think when we have you report out next, let's do an update on on this as well. So first part of April, but in a few meetings from now. Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and let's move on to action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts, including where or funds are coming from. If applicable, action items limited up to ten per meeting after being a call. After being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro tem, citizens are required to state their name and the ward in which they reside. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property in citizens of Alpine will be allowed to speak if there's time available. And we have moved item number three from section seven to the top of the list here. So this will go to Councilman or she, I don't see her Curry. There she is.
Hi, I guess I just want to make a motion. I guess that's what I need to do to remove Mr. Etchison's name from consideration and from, from, from the board and then invite him to come to our next animal advisory board meeting on March ninth.
Okay. So you're making a motion on this?
That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second then?
So also a motion just for the session because I'm curious about what's going on. What do you nominate them? And you want to have a discussion on this? What's going on? What are the thoughts?
Well, it, you know, it was the application was what brought our attention to, to him that he submitted and several of the board members had questions that they'd like to ask him before we go ahead and throw them on the board.
So.
Okay, just a second. You made a motion. Was there a second? I didn't see it. Okay, there we go. Okay.
So what I think I hear is you're trying to do the due diligence because looking at his application is a dog handler with border patrol. I don't know the gentleman. But it sounds like he's got the right background. You're just trying to make sure you're all aligned with that. Is that really kind of what the approach is, Maria?
Yes.
She just said that you want to invite him to the board, see the board, yeah.
Yeah. And then, you know, I'll throw him back on the, I'll throw him back on to see if he wants to be on. I'll put him back on the next agenda for a city council meeting if it, if it's a fit.
Okay. Any more discussion? See? Yes, sir.
Well, we're just talking about it for.
Okay, no more, any more discussions. So then we'll go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Curry.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to item number one.
It sounds like a good process. I mean, for the boards we have, you know, we all council members have people who want to nominate talk into the board, the appropriate board of commission probably makes sense just develop and close. And really when we come back, we just want to share with us on that process, what kind of roundout, I think it would strengthen our boards and commissions. That's just fine.
Okay, we already voted on it and we're going to the next item. That's city manager.
All right, item number one is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action approving the APD Alpine Police Department Annual Racial Profiling Report. That report has been included in council's packet.
I made a motion to approve the APD annual racial profiling report.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Okay, motions made and second discussion.
As council is aware, this is something that has to be approved by council every year. Chief Martin brought one to us last year around this time. I know he's, he's there if there's any questions on that report, but it's something that by law we, we have to provide to council. So you, you have the opportunity to review.
Yes, sir.
The only question I, do we publish this and put it on our website?
Yeah, well, well, of course, with now that all the packets are out there, yes, but in the past we have published.
Right.
But yeah, that's pretty good out there. It's important information. It helps in my mind resolves anyone's potential concern because I saw no concern at all in reading the report.
Yeah, and you actually bring up a good point, counselor, and maybe what we can do is just take the past several years and attach them to our police page website. Gio and I can work on that. And that way, if any folks have any thoughts or, or want to see the past several, they can go straight to the city website.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, ocean carries. Thank you. Okay, item number two, city manager.
All right, mayor. Item number two is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two dash eleven, providing an additional payment option for certain short term rental operators who have been remitting hotel occupancy taxes regularly and that are current and in good standing with the city. Information on that resolution is included in your packet and we did discuss it at the passage of the short term rental ordinance.
Okay, yes, sir.
You may add a proposal to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two dash eleven, providing the additional payment option for short term rental operators who have been remaining their hack funding regularly and are in current and good standing with the city.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is made, seconded. Any discussion?
I would say, mayor, that several of the folks that are in good standing have reached out to me and they're very pleased with this resolution.
Yeah, and I think we, I had one also that was happy with it. So that's good. Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Okay, city manager, item three.
Item number three is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two dash twelve regarding a donation of unused playground equipment to Saul Ross State University. And as you all heard, Pete Geigo mentioned this this evening as well as he was presenting.
Mr. Mayor, I propose to approve the resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two dash twelve regarding the gifting of unused playground equipment to Saul Ross State University.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any discussion?
So the other question I have, Eric, when I looked at the pictures for this, it looks like it's been around a while. Are they going to get this up and claim they're usable for the married student housing for their kids?
Yeah, I believe they will, Rick, because this is the old equipment from Bane's Park. And my sense is Pete played on that as a kid. He's very driven to the restoration of that.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item four, city, Ms. Curry.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty one oh two oh one and ordinance amending chapter ten in the animals article six animal advisory board section ten two, two, three to the animal code of ordinance. Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, most, most have been made in second. Any discussion?
Hey, mayor and council, I'll take the mea culpa on item four and in five. These were ones that Maria had brought forward. We had approved the first reading and didn't bring back the second reading. And so thanks, Maria, for pointing this out. But you've, you've all seen this before and we'll have them scheduled for public hearing and second readings next meeting. So thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Curry, this is the second part to it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty one oh two oh two. And it's, it's an ordinance amending chapter ten and animals article two, keeping animals section ten dash forty one and ten dash fifty nine to the animal code of ordinances.
Their second. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Okay, any discussion on it? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, guys.
Is he on a leash? Item number six, Councilman Stevens.
Thank you, mayor. And to get the ball rolling, I'd like to propose that the city discuss actions necessary or aimed at resolving the issue between the county and the city regarding the encroachment on city property by the county jail.
I'll second.
Old City Hall offices. Okay, and most made and seconded discussion on this.
So it's interesting that the challenge we as the city have had with the county stems back to the agreement that we're trying to get documented. It's been almost a year now that would put in an interlocal agreement that which was put in place by the city manager at the time and the judge at the time, going all the way back to May of nineteen ninety five, when the city deeded the land that the county jail currently sits on. And that was a one dollar deed or one dollar fee. And in exchange for that, the city was to get unfettered access to the county jail. And that is well documented and it's been attested to by a former city council member who was here at the time who actually proposed the motion. It's been attested to by the former county judge. And as it turns out, the current sheriff was on city council and approved that deal back in May of nineteen ninety five. It's unfortunate that we've gone back and forth on this and have, after numerous attempts and requests, tried to get the county to even respond. The judge is not, the sheriff is not. I know the county has done a request for information. That information provided, including that which I just discussed. I tracked this item at Commissioner's Court and at the most recent Commissioner's Court prior to this city council meeting. Commissioners took action that rather than come forward and respond to our request, that they intend to send a attorney to come talk to us in hopes of resolving what they view as a minor land dispute between the city and the county over, over the land where they have encroached on city property, which is not the intent we had all along. And so I'd asked our city attorney to be ready to have a discussion on this tonight. But I, I think one, my intent was to get this on the table and I believe the appropriate action ought to be that the city attorney take action to talk with the county attorney to bring this to a head. And at some point, we may have to file suit. And or we, the city are going to have to go spend money to do something that in my mind is rather frivolous because the county will not respond. So I'll leave it at that. And Sandy, let you make comment and I can come back and amend motion.
That's fine. I'll be willing to go speak to the county attorney and see what's going on, see if we can get anything resolved or something started. And I, I can do that probably this week or first part of next week and see what kind of response I get.
And expecting that we're not going to get any response because we've been working this for now, you know, better part of a year. What would be the city's recourse, given that the county has chosen not to respond at all? Would it be appropriate to refile a lawsuit? What is, I mean, help, help council understand, including me, what our options are.
It, it's a weird situation because the whole, the, one of the whole things they're going to is the magistration issue that he doesn't have to magistrate Alpine, you know, arrestees. That's the whole issue. And he does have that right to not do that unless they're, they're magistrated. And I need to look at the agreement and see and then go speak to Mr. Houston. And I'm probably going to call around and get a little advice from the Texas Municipal League and see what all we can do to this situation. It's such a weird, unique situation. There it's, it's, you know, it's something I'm going to have to reach out and, and do a little research on and see.
So Sandy, our whole intent for forcing the boundary issue had nothing to do with wanting to take the county to task on the boundary. It was all about leverage. Given that the county and the sheriff are going to take the position which they have thus far, that is the sheriff's unilateral position to require magistration, then our only course of action would be to sue the county over violation of land and usurping of city property. Because my sense is that seems to be the issue.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, I think the real question is what latitude would the city have really relative to the thing that county to task for violation of, of the boundary to which they have ownership for property?
Yeah, that, that'll take a little bit of research and I, I don't believe I have ever received the, a copy of what agreement that was entered into what twenty something years ago.
There was never a written agreement. It was a verbal agreement that was honored until the sheriff chose to modify that unilaterally a year ago.
You know, that, that's, that's something I need to look at because, you know, any kind of land deal has to be written because you have that statute drawn to kick in.
Let me back up Sandy. The land deal is well documented in the city council meeting minutes of May of nineteen ninety five. The discussion originally started at the April meeting, I'm sorry, the March meeting, the April meeting. The land deal was codified in May of nineteen ninety five with the verbal agreement that was never put in place in an interlocutory agreement. The Valbeer, the judge at the time represented the county as part of that. Steve Anu, who was the city council member at the time, was the one that proposed it on the city council agenda relative to the land deal. And so you have two verbal agreements and I think the city manager, Bob Soul was the city manager at the time. But that was all a verbal agreement. So the land deal is documented very, very well. The other deal about the jail, which was the reciprocal agreement, is not documented other than verbally.
Yeah, and I think that could wind up being a bit of a problem when you're dealing with the transfer of land for a verbal agreement. And that's what I'm about to look at.
So, so the lane transfer was straightforward. What, what we have shown though, is the county has in essence taken city property without authority. And that would be the basis for going after the county.
Right. And, and it's gonna, I'm gonna have to look into it a little bit because you, you still are dealing with land. And, and you know, verbal agreements pretty much don't come into play when you're dealing with the land part because we gave them that land with a verbal agreement that we're going to let, that they will let us admit all of our arrested individuals from the city.
Yes, so Sandy, yes, we gave them land. They have taken more land than we gave them.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that part, yes, that we can. Yeah.
They have taken more land than they are authorized to take. The boundary of their jail is outside of that land that was given to them by some four feet.
Yeah, it's like point two, seven, seven or something is what I read or saw.
Well, it's, it's four feet to the west, but then it's twenty plus feet to the north.
Yeah.
And they constructed a fence across the city street as well.
Okay.
And they've really taken more land than was exchanged for that dollar.
Amount. Okay.
And of course, then, you know, one would question, why do you sell a piece of land for a dollar if there's not a back end agreement, but that was, that was the verbal piece that never went into place. But really, I think our leverage right now is the fact that that there is a good survey in place now. We know specifically what property was sold to them. And they've gone beyond with their structure, what, what property was sold. And if, if you'll reach out to Steve, what we can do is then come back and update council next Tuesday at the, at the council meeting.
Okay, I will do that.
So Eric, from a authority standpoint or from city attorney, do you need an amendment to the motion to give the city attorney that latitude to take that action?
I, I don't think we really do. It's in the normal scope of work of what we would expect from attorney, but we, we certainly could amend if, if, if everybody felt more comfortable with that. I sometimes you amend and it gets a little convoluted, right?
Yeah, I think we should leave it the same, just under, that's per duty.
Okay.
So I think we should just go ahead and vote on item six and then just let Sandy take it from there.
Yeah, and then we'll report back on the March second meeting in, in open session on her report.
Yeah, then Eric, related to this specifically, one of the actions that I think you want to take is come back to the city council with a recommendation about what I call the low cost temporary jail that the city would have direct jurisdiction over by putting in a structure inside the current city police station so that in the discussion next week, we at least have an alternative and you can tell us whether you think that makes sense or not from a magistrations standpoint.
Yeah, and Chief and I talked about that in our driving around last week. So we'll, we'll pull, pull those numbers together.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Nope. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. And city council member comments and answers will start with, let's start with Betty.
I think we had a very nice meeting today. And I, I think that we'll be meeting next week. So, thank you.
Hey, Ms. Curry.
I don't have any.
I don't have any comments, but thank you.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. Thank you. I would just like to thank the many individuals, organizations and businesses that stepped up last week during our winter storm. Uh, with anything from offers of hot meals, place to shower. Uh, and special thanks to, uh, Eric and Chief Martin, who did numerous, uh, welfare checks and helped individuals that needed generators for medical, medical reasons. I think, uh, that's what got us through as a community and that's what Alpine is all about.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And our other newly council member, Martine.
Like Chris, I want to thank Eric and the chief for being out in the field and keeping us up and performing through emails or radio. Thank you all.
Okay. Councilman Stevens.
Mr. Thanks, Mayor. I want to add a couple of thoughts. I thought, uh, well, as challenging as things were last week, the response of the city leadership, Eric, Chief, Scott, Johnny, uh, Eddie and their teams was, uh, nothing short of remarkable. Uh, I had the opportunity because we had some generators, we were able to loan out, get to talk to some people firsthand. Uh, and, and those were really, really well taken care of. And I gotta tell you, as one who donated some property, I'd also like to say generous came back, the gas tanks were full, the propane tanks were full. So, thank you. It was really nice. I just put them back on the shelf. So, uh, you know, uh, ready, uh, for the next time. I also want to give a shout out to the fire department who, uh, was out there on that cold Thursday night when the sunshine house burned down to the ground.
Uh, wasn't the sunshine house, it was the Buffalo Rose.
I'm sorry, the Buffalo Rose. Sorry about that. Yeah. I'm sorry. The Buffalo Rose burned down. Thanks, Mayor. Uh, it burned to the ground and I was, I was rolling out there this morning because I do work on the east end of town. It was smoldering yet again. So, uh, it just, a fire that just keeps on giving. It, it, I think it's a really testament to, to what, uh, what Martine and Chris and everyone else has talked about. We're blessed to live in a community where people take care of each other. And, uh, and so thanks to everyone for that.
And, you know, I'd like to compliment the folks here in Alpine also. They've done a remarkable job in, in this, uh, crazy weather we've had, you know, out of, most of the city was without power for four days. A lot of people came around offering showers, food and whatnot. I was including one of those folks that was without power and had a lot of generous, generous offers to, to go to their homes. But the town has always pulled together, going back to 2016 at the school shooting. Uh, and I just first become mayor and when I asked anybody in town, everybody pulled together, brought meals to the civic center to help support the kids that were there. And also our entire city staff, uh, has worked diligently to make sure that our community stays the way it is. It's a friendly community and we look out for one another. So my compliments to them and again, uh, our outside forces for the fantastic work they did. And of course the scudders in the fire, uh, down at the Buffalo Rose, I happened to drive by there that night and discuss it with, uh, Chris, the sheriff and, and, uh, the chief. And they did just a fantastic job making sure the fire didn't spread. We had the hotel running next door. We had the Pizza Hut next door also. So they did a fantastic job in containing it and it was freezing cold that evening. So thank you all very much. Y'all have done a fantastic job. Makes me proud to be in Alpine. Okay. Let's move on to the executive session.
So Mr. Mayor, uh, I propose that pursuant to the Texas government phone, uh, consultation with the attorney on that was due to attorney, the town, city attorney, we have a discussion that we move into executive session to discuss the Union Pacific ordinance update.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Motion carries. We'll go to executive session, then take a break or anything, or just move straight into it.
I think we'll move straight into it there.
Okay.
And I just wanted to put eyes on the two people, the two new people. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're, they're working their way through. presume Geo, you're going to line us up. We're all set.
I think we'll switch.
Yeah, what's going on here?
You're calling, is it inviting you to join the executive session?
Hey there.
Oh yeah, I got it.
Okay.
I'm joining. Sorry, I'm a little slow. Chris, come on, Chris, rip it off your ear and do something.
Oh, no.
We're not.
House, no, it's not the word.
Getting in trouble by myself, Chris. No help here.
Okay. Come on here. He's inviting you.
Ah.
Hey, Gio, I don't know if you can uh actually move Betty back out of the breakout room, but if you can. Oh, there you go. Got it. Cool.
Okay, what we need is a council. Council chambers, rather. There we go.
There they are.
Hey.
Great, thank you.
So, Councilman Stevens.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I propose we resume the regular session of the city council meeting.
Hey, second. Second. Okay, there we go. Okay, those in favor, raise your right hand. Get back to regular session. Thank you all very much. We're in regular session. What time is it?
Seven twenty-eight.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I propose that city council add the Union Pacific ordinance update uh at the next uh city council agenda.
Is there a second on this? Okay, been seconded. Any discussion? Yeah, okay, no discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, opposed, like sign. We'll move it to next meeting then. Okay. Councilman Stevens.
I propose we adjourn.
Not debatable. We're adjourned.
Right.
Thank you all very much. Good meeting.